Okay Cindy, we may go ahead and get started and Mr. Reiner can join in when he is available.
I will watch for him.
Okay, and if you could notify me at that point in time, that would be great. Are we, are we live streamed now?
We are live streaming now.
Very good, thank you. I'd like to reconvene Monday, October 12th, meeting of Dublin City Council, call it back to order. Good evening and welcome. Certainly in these unusual times, flexibility is important. And our technology is rapidly evolving in this environment. So given these current conditions, we have made the decision to hold this public meeting virtually. Our goal in doing that is to have the highest level of citizen input as possible. Our current council chambers certainly confine the ability to bring the public in. This virtual platform allows us to bring the public in in a much greater, in a much greater state. To view this meeting, it will be accessed livestream on the city's website and the city of Dublin's YouTube channel. During the meeting, you can submit any comments by using the form under the streaming video on the city's website. These comments will be, will be relayed to us, Dublin City Council, during the meeting by our Director of Communications and Public Information. For those of you that have registered in advance to participate in this WebEx meeting and provide testimony or public comment, I will recognize each speaker. You will have the opportunity to speak. Each person will be allowed to five minutes for public testimony. We want to accommodate public participation to the greatest extent possible. We welcome your comments on this very important public business this evening. Please refrain from inappropriate comments. This system certainly is not perfect. It is certainly getting better by the week, hopefully, but we certainly as we try to do the best that we can. At this point in time, Homer Rogers will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please Homer, lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you Homer, certainly do appreciate that. Okay, I have a special presentation, Lifeline of Ohio's 35th Anniversary, and I believe that we have Lauren Stevens with us, Manager of Community Outreach. Lauren, are you here with us?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, well, welcome, and thank you for joining us, and we look forward to hearing some comments that you may have about Lifeline of Ohio and your 35th anniversary, so please.
Well, Mayor Grooms and members of council, my name is Lauren Stevens, and I'm with Lifeline of Ohio. As previously mentioned, we are the Designated Organ and Tissue Recovery Agency, serving central Ohio. On behalf of my colleagues and the more than 700 local individuals who are waiting for a life-saving organ transplant, I want to thank you for your support for organ, eye, and tissue donation. 2020 has been a year that no one really could have predicted. Despite the many challenges that have faced us in relationship to COVID-19, I am proud to share with you that our organization has sustained its work and practices to ensure that those who need a transplant are given their second chance at life. And although the donation community has seen organ transplants grow 44% in the last six years, there are still more than 108,000 people in the United States who are waiting for a life-saving transplant. I am proud to say that Lifeline of Ohio has been serving our community and facilitating the gift of donation for 35 years, and we look forward to continuing to honor those gifts as we move forward. We'd like to recognize the council tonight and thank them for acknowledging that this is a public health concern and highlighting how their, how your community members can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when you go to the Bureau of Motor Vehicles and are asked if you'd like to be a donor, or by registering online at lifelineofohio.org. We'd like to thank you for your commitment to donation and for supporting those who have been impacted by organ, eye, and tissue donation as a donor family member, a recipient, a living donor, or a registered donor. Thank you so much.
Well, thanks Lauren, sure do appreciate having you here with us this evening. You know, it is so easy to register to become an eye and tissue organ donor. My son is 17 now, but when we went to get his driver's license, they asked the question, and it was really warmed my heart when he very quickly said yes. So, you know, I know that we all renew every four years or so, and are young people getting their licenses, so really do appreciate that. We have a resolution here for you this evening that will get out in the mail to you, but I would like to read it to you at this point in time, if that's okay. "It states whereas with more than 108,000 individuals on the national waiting list for life-saving organ transplants, the need for more or registered organ, eye, and tissue donors in the U.S. is critical. And whereas an estimated 20 people, men, women, and children die each day for lack of an available organ. And whereas in Ohio alone, more than 3,100 individuals are currently waiting for the gift of life. And whereas central Ohio has more than 700 men, women, and children currently listed for an organ transplant at the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center or Nationwide Children's Hospital. And whereas a single donor can potentially save the lives of eight people through organ donation and enhance the lives of more than 75 others through tissue donation. And whereas for 35 years Lifeline of Ohio, the local organ procurement organization serving our community, has been empowering Dublin residents to save and heal lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation. And whereas more than 5.7 million Ohioans have made the decision to register as an organ, eye, and tissue donor in the Ohio donor registry. And whereas the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles makes it easy to register, an advanced directive decision to become a donor by signing up online at lifelineofohio.org or by filling out a paper registration form. And whereas discussing a donation decision with a family member is one of the most important additional steps a donor can take. Now therefore, I, Chris Amaro's Grooms, Mayor of the City of Dublin, do hereby recognize Lifeline of Ohio on its 35th anniversary, encourage the city of Dublin residents to consider sharing the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation, signed this 12th day of October." So Lauren, we'll get that out in the mail to you. We certainly appreciate all that you do to have these options available to Ohioans, and the Harringtons are good friends of mine, and I know that they, they carry the torch proud for you, and we're really proud of them and the difference they've made in that organization. So, thanks so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and thank you, council.
Good evening. You're welcome. It's gonna be, it's gonna be exhilarating. You're welcome to stay with us, but we'd understand if you left.
I'll log off, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. Sue, do we have anyone signed up for items not on the agenda?
We do not.
Very good. And Anne, have we received any through the clerk's office? No, she's shaking her head.
No, we haven't.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on the consent agenda this evening are the September 28th, September 30th council meeting minutes, and we also have a notice of legislative authority for a D5J liquor permit for Gardenia LLC, doing businesses, the Gardenia Market at 16 North High. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Sue, have we received any comments via the website on any of the items on the consent agenda?
We have not, no comments or questions.
Thank you. And Anne, through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
Okay, then I make a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy, Mr. Keeler. Anne, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Ms. Alito?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? And Mayor Amaro's Grooms.
Yes, thank you. Okay, second reading, public hearing ordinances, ordinance 73-19 amended.
This is adopting Chapter 122 under Title 11 of the City of Dublin Codified Ordinances to regulate short-term rental facilities.
Very good, thank you. For our staff report this evening, I believe we'll have Jennifer Rader will be joined by colleagues at Boggs.
Thank you, Mayor. Council reviewed a prior draft of this legislation at its December 2nd, 2019, and January 6, 2020 council meetings, and after hearing testimony, the ordinance was referred back to the Community Development Committee meeting for additional consideration. The CDC meeting was initially planned for March, but due to COVID-19 was postponed to September 16th. We had a great discussion at that CDC meeting with a significant amount of public involvement. And the revised legislation that we have before you tonight reflects the changes that were discussed at that meeting. So I'm going to turn it over to Thad Boggs to share the presentation and walk through the revisions and the legislation itself.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good evening, everybody. Bear with me just a moment, I'm going to share our presentation here on the screen. Or perhaps I'm not, I apologize, this worked.
Mr. Boggs, do you see share at the bottom?
I do, yes.
By clicking on that? And not the whiteboard. Over at the left, you can shut that down and open your file instead.
Ah, I see.
Mr. Rogers, do you have any hints for Mr. Boggs?
Yeah, first, you need to go back to your share and share the file, not the whiteboard.
Right.
You're gonna have to find the file.
I have a file. There it is.
Then once you have the file, double-click the file, it should come up.
It is a bit of a different interface than last time I used the web.
There you go, I can see it.
There we go.
Just so you know, to move your screens, you're going to need to click on the left, the up and down arrows for pages. I believe that's
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll just move past that first slide, which just recounts what Jennifer went through with regard to the dates that we've discussed this previously. We presented the following seven items as options to the Community Development Committee. Everywhere from adopting a policy, just setting forth expectations and communicating that to our short-term rental operators. Through registration, which is what we spoke about in more detail last time we were in front of council. Differentiating between hosted and unhosted rentals, capping the number of nights in a year that the rental might be offered. Prohibiting them in certain zoning districts, prohibiting them altogether, or proceeding with no further regulation. And so the Community Development Committee went through these several options and ultimately landed on a sort of blend of really on number two and four.
Thad, I think, I just want to make sure it's advancing. It doesn't look like the presentation's advancing.
I have the overview of legislation slide with the first button saying, first button saying creates.
No. No, it's still on the title page. There we go, there we go, yep.
Just so you know, I just did that. So I will click pages for you, Mr. Boggs.
Okay, thank you, because I'm advancing it on my screen, and who thought it was showing up on yours? So the ordinance before you creates Chapter 122 of the Codified Ordinances, which as the previous version you have seen did, defines the short-term rental as rooms or dwellings rented for less than 30 consecutive days. But instead of the 14 days in a calendar year as the maximum rental period, the maximum rental amount, really. What this version does as a result of the discussion that was had at the Community Development Committee is it prohibits renting them for more than two weeks a year and requires a minimum rental period of one week. So rather than the potential of having 14 individual nights spread out over an entire year, a person who would be renting a short-term rental out in the city of Dublin would have to commit to, okay, these are the two weeks that I'm going to rent, and that would use their allotment for the calendar year. So recognizing, I think, the number of events rather that might attract short-term rental tenants to the city rather than being a constant demand throughout the year and potentially a constant effect on neighboring properties. So it also includes, as the previous version did before, registration of those rentals and a fee to accommodate the staff and city resources that go into administering the program. Next slide, please.
It's on
Yeah, Slide 5, please. So what the the other thing that is different about this version than the previous version that was presented to council is that, well, I should say, different than what was discussed at council was this concept of distinguishing between hosted and unhosted rentals. Ultimately, that was found by the Community Development Committee not to be an attractive option in the sense that if, if there were negative effects of having short-term rentals, whether they be traffic or people on other properties or noise, that they did not see hosted versus unhosted as being a distinguishing factor necessarily there. It also, this version also creates a bit more of a stringent regulation for people who violate any potential conduct. Regulations of the short-term rental registration, going from six months' suspension to a year, and then finally no longer being able to register as a short-term rental operator for repeated violations. Slide 6, please. This also would include some more questions for the operator in terms of how many occupants does the property accommodate? How many will be staying on a particular stay? It caps the number of parking spaces, so just what can be accommodated in the garage, in the driveway, and two on-street parking spaces. And then lastly, rather than proceeding in a criminal prosecution from a unclassified offense to a third-degree misdemeanor, which the previous versions of this ordinance had done, this would make it an unclassified misdemeanor, so on a repeat offense. So no jail time is available, but the fine could be up to $1,000. So the potential under this, under the right circumstances, for the mayor's court magistrate or municipal judge to impose a somewhat more attention getting fined for a repeat violator. Seventh slide, please. This chart is what was previously presented to council, and you can see some of the comparisons that we have between our hotel uses, our sort of traditional bed and breakfast uses, which are already accommodated for in the zoning code, and to which this short-term rental code would not apply to those existing operations. And lastly, the corporate housing concern, which was brought up when we spoke about this before the full council previously, and that amendment to prevent this from applying to those uses, which are vital to the business community in the city of Dublin, those corporate housing uses would not be required to register or buy by these short-term rental regulations. Slide 8, please. And that is the end of this mercifully brief presentation once we got it up here. So I'm happy to speak about the substance of the legislation or answer any questions that any of you may have.
Great, thank you. Mr. Reiner is the chair. Did, did we get Mr. Reiner back?
We did not.
We did not.
And I'm not sure exactly when would be appropriate, but keep in mind, we have Mr. O'Neill, which is going to speak on this.
Okay, we were going to get a committee report from the chair of that committee, but I do believe that Mr. Boggs' report summarized the activity that happened in the committee as well. Andy, Mr. Keeler sits on that committee with me. Andy, do you have anything that you'd add outside of the report that Mr. Boggs just presented to us?
So I am on the committee, and I think Mr. Boggs did a great job of summarizing the issues that we discussed. That being said, I have a couple of concerns or issues. The first one
Hey Andy, if I could stop you for a minute, I just wanted to make sure that the report was accurate. We'll take we're gonna come back to council discussion if that's agreeable with you.
Fine.
Okay, I, Mr. O'Neill has magically appeared on the screen before me. So thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for joining us. You are the only person I have at this point in time that has signed in to speak, but after you speak, I will touch base with community relations and also with the clerk's office. So, Mr. O'Neill, if you would like to share your testimony with us, and if you could please keep at the five minutes, we certainly would appreciate that. And whenever you're ready, please go ahead.
All right, thank you, and thank you to council for allowing me to speak. Peter O'Neill, Turnberry Court, Dublin, Ohio. And I think what has been presented, the subcommittee has put together, I'm in full agreement with. I like what you've come up with. The only comment I wanted to add, I know there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, been in Dublin for over 25 years, and, you know, for the first eight or nine years, I was over in the Riverside Green, Riverside Hills area, and, you know, probably a quarter, a third of the houses around me were rentals. Very much neighborhood, still have some good friends when I lived there. Technically, they rented their homes, but it was, you know, I got to know them, got to know the families. They lived there, they were there every day. They were there for months. It, it worked. When, now I'm in a cul-de-sac now, we have two Airbnbs in the cul-de-sac, completely different experience. So what we primarily see are large gatherings, parties. We do not see families coming to simply occupy the house while they go visit the zoo. Don't see that at all. We do see businesses that are taking, you know, using the Airbnb medium as a way to get a large, in this case, a house with bedrooms and, you know, a big kitchen table or dining room table to use like a conference room. Other times, it's not real sure what it's being used for, but a lot of vehicular traffic in and out. So but most importantly, just completely out of character with the residential area that we moved into and, and, you know, why we moved into, to the Dublin neighborhood. So, once again, thank you for allowing me to speak, and I really appreciate the council's time on this matter, and that's, that's all I have. So, thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments, Mr. O'Neill. Okay, Sue, we want to check in with you and make sure that through public information, we have not received any additional comments.
Mayor, yes, we have received one additional comment, which I will read. The comment is from Victoria Bork at 8612 Dunblane Court. And the subject is Airbnb guidelines. She writes, "Great start from the prior meeting regarding guidelines for the Airbnb for general rentals. However, I would encourage you to make a strong statement of zero toleration for parties and event rental. I suggest not a three-strike and you're out, but a one-strike and you're out. This would acknowledge the homeowner or rental company has the responsibility to vet their client. What are the rights of the neighbor and neighborhood to defend themselves from the inconvenience and distribution? Who pays for the property damage and garbage in the lawns and street to pick up? What role will Dublin City Police provide? Does a neighbor have to wait until 11:00 PM for the noise ordinance? If there are cars in the lawn, driveway, and street preventing emergency vehicles from entering the neighborhood, is there an ordinance? Is there a smell, if there is a smell of drugs or people arguing in the street, what are the guidelines for the neighbor who has to endure this lack of self-control? Upper Arlington has said no to any Airbnb. Why are there citizens and neighborhoods of more value than Dublin? Finally, now that we know a plot of terrorism toward an elected official occurred in an Airbnb in Dublin, don't you believe there is enough to say no?"
Great, thanks Sue for relaying that, and thank you, Mrs. Bork, for your thoughts. And that's the only one we've
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, Anne, have we received any through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
Okay. All right. Well, I'd like to open it up this time to council for thoughts and discussions. Mr. Keeler had a thought going that I interrupted, so please, I'll go ahead and start back with you, Mr. Keeler.
No problem. So I agree with the residents, Mr. O'Neill and Mrs. Bork, thank you for your testimony. I think it's clear that we want to preserve residential neighborhoods as residential neighborhoods, and that's what this legislation is intended to do. I don't know that, I can quite understand that the two-week limit, I'm not saying that two weeks is not long enough, but the legislation, 122.02A, says that a, a host cannot rent the property for less than one week. So I understand you don't want seven different occupants for seven days in that week, but it basically reads that you can't rent it for three days. So just a little nuance there. Is there a way to change that verbiage?
There certainly is a way to, to change it. It could be amended from the version that's presented on the floor. My, my interpretation of what the discussion was at the Community Development Committee was, they wanted it to be such that it was not able to be rented for three days versus the minimum of seven. But perhaps, perhaps my interpretation was, was mistaken. But perhaps my interpretation was mistaken, so we could...
You know, if one side says no short-term rentals at all, and the other says unlimited days, it would seem to me that if you said, basically, your three-day tenant takes up your one week. You've used your one week on that three days, but I would imagine that the neighbors of that property would rather have someone there for three days instead of seven. So that's the first thing. And then 122.04F, one and two, number of cars and occupants. The way I read it, it didn't state that we were limiting the number of cars or occupants. We were simply asking the host to state how many occupants or vehicles would be there. And I think that there needs to be a limit. I've seen legislation around the country that limits it based on the number of bedrooms or something like that. So while I would agree that the application should state the number of occupants and vehicles, I think the legislation should go one step further to the point where, you know, we're limiting that. And then the last thing that I have a question about really is in terms of the violations. I think that they need, that the, it needs to be teeth, and violators need to lose the privilege of having the ability to rent the property. I guess my only concern would be a litigious neighbor that calls when, you know, a car park, two cars pull in the driveway three times a day, and, you know, they see that as being disruptive. They call the police. They maybe do or do not violate the legislation. Is that a strike against that homeowner? I think, you know, it seems to me the consensus is nobody wants this in their neighborhood. So I could see neighbors being extremely sensitive to the fact that there's a hosted Airbnb next to them. So I guess, how are the complaints verified, validated, and so on? That's all.
Very quickly, if I might, just to address at least your first couple of points about maximum occupancy and parking. In Division B of Section 122.04, which is where they fill out their initial registration, that is where in B5 and B6, it states the maximum number of occupants that the site would accommodate, up to two per bedroom. And then B6 is the maximum number of motor vehicles. So Division F below is with each individual rental, they're saying how many of that number they've registered for will be present. So if a five-bedroom house, maybe there's only six people that will be there, and they have to show before each rental.
Very good, very good.
All right, hey, Thad, this is... Questions, and one of them piggybacks right to Andy's point. I'm assuming that when it comes to the progressive suspensions, when it references result of an offense, that offense, that's a conviction, is it not? I mean, don't they have to be charged with violating the statute and be found guilty in mayor's court for that to be an offense that would trigger criminal consequences? Whereas an offense, just a neighbor calling?
So to be an offense that is subject to the penalty in 122.13, yes, that would be a mayor's court conviction. For the revocation of registration at 122.07, there, that's when you get into, you know, is it noisy? Have they exceeded the number of occupants, et cetera? And so that would be an administrative revocation where, based upon report and evidence gathered by the planning director through code enforcement, they would have the ability to revoke the registration. So that would totally be a civil administrative penalty subject to appeal by the property owner if they felt that was an incorrect decision.
Wow, okay. So the due process provided there is not in mayor's court. It is through an administrative, and what's the burden of proof? What are the, so I kind of have Andy's concern. If there is a neighbor that's just, you know, they're going to call every day, and they're going to make the complaints about the noise, and they're going to make the complaints, how, you do, I mean, you have to have a balance. I'm in favor of the legislation. I think its goal is admirable. I think that its purpose is proper. I'm fully supportive of this, and I will vote for it. I think, though, you do, I mean, in all fairness, you have to balance people's rights here. And I think, I could be wrong, Andy, correct me if I'm wrong. I think by saying it's a week at a time, you're trying to prevent that one-night party. You know, you don't want to have 14 single nights where they have 14 Fridays in a row where they rent out their house for a party. You want to, you're looking more for that person that is not residential, but at least more of an extended week-long stay as opposed to one night. I assume that that was the goal of the minimum of a seven-day rental. And if you really rent it for seven days to have a party on Friday night, it must be a heck of a party that would be worth doing that. So I understand the logic of that, if that's in fact the logic. I'm just wondering, I mean, we do have a balance to reach between the property owner's right to lease out this and the next-door neighbor's right to complain about it. How do we, what is the due process there if a person feels that they were being wrongly accused? What's their recourse?
So with the revocation of registration, that civil administrative process, they are just losing the privilege that is granted by the short-term rental registration. Now, they do have a right to due process before that is taken away. And so it is incumbent upon, it would be incumbent upon the city wanting to take away that privilege to have proof by a preponderance of the evidence, and just as any civil proceeding would be. On appeal, then, if it were the permit, if it were the short-term rental operator who was appealing, then that burden switches on appeal to show that the city's decision to revoke was unreasonable, not supported by a preponderance of the evidence. And in striking that balance, that's what we have attempted to do based on the conversations we've heard at the committee and at council, is to have a balance between, obviously, that criminal conviction is very meaningful to people. Nobody wants to have that on their record. And so there is obviously a greater amount of due process. You have proof beyond a reasonable doubt. You have right of confrontation of witnesses, a number of sort of our Bill of Rights-type of protections that come into play. With the simple revocation of the registration, there aren't those, there isn't that weight of additional protections, but that is similar in kind to somebody who is having a, you know, contractor's registration revoked or any other type of...
A liquor license.
Or permitting that is being revoked.
So in the, with the criminal stuff, it talked about the fines and all that, but then when I looked into the legislation, which I did not comb through it with a fine-tooth comb, I don't need to, that's what you guys do, but it says up to a $200 fine. So the magistrate still has some discretion. You know, I think we do have to have a relativity, kind of a balance here as to how bad was the infraction. So when the fines are concerned, it is up to those fines. I also think that, a side note real quick, that removing that from an M3 to an unclassified misdemeanor, in mayor's court, you automatically have a right to tran... if you are exposed to jail. You just have to say, "I'm going downtown." And now we have a municipal court judge. I think this is a homegrown problem. This is a problem Dublin wants to deal with itself. We will know who the problematic properties are. We will know the places where we want to focus. Our magistrate will. So I think keeping it here is a very, very good idea, which results from those unclassified misdemeanors because there's no jail exposure. But I like how it's up to the fine, so there's still some discretion with the magistrate to decide what that fine would be. When it comes to the revocation or the suspensions, that is, there is no discretion, right? If there's an offense, it is automatically a six-month suspension the first time, the second time. It goes further. I mean, those are mandatory consequences, right? Once there is a violation.
Right, provided that the violation is found by the preponderance.
Okay. And then this question, my final question, might be getting too far into the weeds, but I think that this, these are the weird facts that sometimes come up, and it references in here that I guess it's the planning department has the right to enter the property to search to make sure that the representations that were made in the application are accurate. And it's interesting because the person that sent in their comments, their written comments, said, "What happens if we smell drugs?" Very interesting problem. What happens if one of our planning people who are designed, who are empowered to enforce this, go walking into a residence, and you find a bunch of cocaine on the table? Well, now certainly you got to back up and get out and call the police. But what happens if that planning person goes and knocks on the door and says, "Hey, I want to come in," and they say, "You're not coming in"? And there isn't necessarily probable cause for the police to barge in the door, but the planning person has the administrative authority, and it mentions in the memo that they can seek other, you know, legal recourse. Is that legal recourse, call the police? And will the police say, "This planning person is coming in, and we're helping them, and this is an administrative search"? You know, you get into issues of, you know, a cop stumbles in, and God forbid, they find something that they didn't expect to find, and now we shouldn't have been in there because we didn't follow the right search-and-seizure provisions. And I know it's probably an administrative search is what I would assume, but I'm just curious if that has come up in any of the litigation of these kinds of statutes.
There is not, to my knowledge, like a Fourth Amendment decision on the administrative search with respect to entering premises. Now, I would say that an administrative search in this instance would be very limited in scope. I would not advise, and if there is statement to the contrary in the memo, then that should be probably clarified. I would not advise anybody, planning or police, to go into somebody's premises, into somebody's home without their consent to search, either for evidence of a crime or for evidence of a violation of their registration.
I totally get, I can see your point, Thad. I totally agree with that. The litigation comes up when you stump, you think you're allowed to be standing there, and you find something you never intended to find. And now what do you, you got to make sure you were allowed to be standing where you were standing at the time when you found what you didn't intend to find. And I just want to make sure we kind of thought that through.
Right. And in that circumstance, if this were to pass and planning or code enforcement staff were to be in that situation, our code enforcement staff, of course, is versed in that from their current duties. And when, for example, if there was a smell of burnt marijuana, either from a code enforcement officer just doing a spot check on a registration or from a call to a neighbor, my expectation would be that the police would be involved at that point.
Yeah. Thank you, Thad, that's all.
Thanks, Greg. I appreciate that. And Andy, other thoughts, comments? Jane's got her hand up.
Yes, I have a question for Thad. In 122.04B7, corporate housing is accepted. It's not under the registration restrictions, which is understandable and incorrect in my viewpoint. But it says there that an affidavit attesting that the short-term rental operation is in compliance with all applicable local, state, federal laws and regulations concerning the provision of sleeping accommodations to transient guests. So I guess my question is, what does this affidavit actually have to state? Because it seems a little vague to me. It seems like the affidavit could be used for someone who just says that they're a corporate business. So maybe you could kind of clarify that.
Right. So the particular affidavit that's being referenced in 122.04B7 is for a registrant of an actual short-term rental. So that is not the corporate housing affidavit. This is for someone who, when they file their registration, we're requiring them to say to the city that they do have smoke alarms, exits that are clear of obstruction, things that are regulated by other entities or by things such as the building code.
Right.
Just to sort of cross the Ts on that, but not something that we wanted to reproduce in its entirety here.
Okay. So I guess that I misunderstood what the affidavit was for. So my question then goes back to corporate housing businesses. How do we know that they are a legitimate corporate housing business? Someone who's purchased five homes here for BnBs in the city and decides they're going to become corporate houses? So I mean, there, I know that in the, there's a Corporate Housing Professional Association, and I know that they have, you know, their parameters about what a corporate housing association member would have to comply with. But is there, are we looking for businesses that are licensed as corporate housing and register their places on other, you know, media outlets, not BnB, but in employers, at places where, you know, for hospitals, that sort of thing, where they're actually, they're actually in the business of corporate housing? How do we, how do we sort out the true corporate houses from the people who say they are, but they're not actually?
If we were to investigate that, and frankly, what the ordinance envisions is, at first, we are going to take people at their word. And by filing an affidavit, they are giving their word under oath, which itself is enforceable. Sorry, is that...
Yeah, can you repeat that, Thad? You broke up, and I didn't hear it.
Sure. The ordinance starts with the assumption that we will take people at their word. And that is backed up, it starts to become backed up with the affidavit in the first place because that's given under oath, your penalty of perjury, under penalty of falsification, which is its own criminal offense. So I would suspect that if an entity that came in and said it was corporate housing started to receive complaints, leading us to doubt whether that affidavit was true, it could be investigated, looking at all of the resources that you just mentioned, corporate housing trade associations, how does it hold itself out to the public? In the affidavit itself, it has to be a business entity. So it cannot be, "I'm Thad Boggs, and I attest that I am operating a corporate housing venture from my property." It has to be, you know... Yes, an LLC, a corporation, something that is a non-natural person. So there is an intrinsic hurdle that, you know, many people do not, whether it's smart or not from an insurance perspective, many people on Airbnb don't create an LLC and rent their Airbnb through that. So...
And also, my sense is, this is a year, this is a program that we're giving ourselves time to evaluate. And my understanding is that we're going to set this, if we choose to set this resolution or this ordinance, that this will give us an opportunity if we find that there are areas that need improvement or items that we had not faced before or anticipated. We have the opportunity to be sure that we can kind of like polish this off so it works the way we intend. Is that my understanding?
Nothing is carved in stone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other thoughts? Does anyone else have, would like to weigh in as well? You know, Andy, to your point about the seven days, I think that, as I recall our conversations, it was that you would have two seven-day periods in which you could rent your facility. You could rent it for, from one to seven of those days. But... But, but one day rental took up seven of your available days. Um, if that, if you're following my logic there, that's what I, that was the sum that I took from the conversation that we had in committee.
That's the way I understood it also, um. Sure, but this says short-term rentals for a period of less than one week are not permitted. So, you know, um, I don't, I don't know how you reconcile that, but your, your, your recollection is the same as mine. We want to limit it to basically two tenants, up to two tenants in a 14-day period. You can slice that up any way you want, as long as they're not coming every other day. Um, they get up to seven days per occupant. Um, but it, it doesn't have to be seven days. It can be something less than that.
Right, and I think the magic in my mind of 14 days was the, um, federal income tax guidelines that, that permit an individual for leasing out their primary residence for up to 14 days a year with deferred taxes. So, um, just to kind of give a little backdrop of how we got to 14 days. That was, that was the reason is because of the federal tax code, so. Um, other thoughts on, on this? Kathy, please.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to say thank you to the residents and to the committees. I mean, this has been through for quite a period of time. And there have been many residents who've weighed in, so. Um, and a few iterations of this, right, as we're seeing the final one tonight. And as Jane highlighted that, you know, we're going to look at this in a year and see how it goes. But I just wanted to thank everybody for, um, taking the time, being diligent, ask the questions. Um, because it, it is an important consideration. I'm supportive of this legislation, um, because of the residential nature of people purchase homes to have residences, so I'm very supportive of that. And I appreciate it, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the, the diligence and the conversation that went into arriving at what will be our, um, first year into this. So I'm supportive and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thanks Kathy. Having lived on a street that, that had one of these, um, I can certainly appreciate how disruptive that can, that can be to the life on a street or a neighborhood. Um, Thad, what do we need to do to maybe clarify that language of the seven, the two seven-day windows? Is that something, can we vote on this legislation and then, um, have you do the final version of that? Or do we need to go ahead and establish language now prior to a vote?
Yeah, we want to go ahead and establish that language now prior to a vote. And if, I, I just want to make sure that the intention is clear. The idea being, once you've rented it for one night, you're committed as the operator for seven. The tenant may only stay one night, but the operator, that's seven of, of his or her allotment.
You, you can rent it up to two times per year and each rental can be for up to seven days.
Perfect.
Correct. Can you guys hear me, by the way?
We can, John.
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Okay, now, you, you were, uh, Andy and Chris were correct. And that's exactly what we as a committee is recommending to all of you. And, and your last, uh, comments, Chris was right on. You get two rentals, you get two weeks, and that pretty much, uh, what is what we arrived at. With great logic, and you guys already discussed it about, uh, using it every night and all the other things. So no, that's, that, Thad, that's where we're at.
Great, thanks, John. Thad, can you go ahead and, uh, take a minute, rewrite that and read that back to us soon for the amended ordinance to vote on?
I will do that. Give me just one moment.
I'm hearing the little theme song from Jeopardy playing in my head, so no pressure.
Yeah, I, I'm hearing it too.
The category is legislation for 2000.
I'll circle back and give Thad a few minutes. Thad, I'll buy you time here. We did not received any subsequent public comment, have we, Sue or Ann?
We have not.
Great. Ann?
Sorry, we have not.
Great, thank you.
So as we're sitting here listening to the Jeopardy music, I have to ask the question. If, if I have a, um, one-week rental allotment that I'm allowed to rent, am I allowed to rent to more than one person in that week? Or do I only, you're only allowed to rent to the one, you have one rental agreement? It can be used for a day or two or three or the full seven? Or even if they don't show up, you have used your week, correct? Clarify, all right.
Yep, you, you get two per year and that, those two can be each up to seven days. Or any person thereof.
And most of these, most of these sites have, have, um, the owners will tell you that if you, you have to pay X number of dollars, percentage up to 100%, X number of days before your rental, and there's no refund, right? So there are some protections for the, um, owner of the property against some of those things. And many actually al- also have a minimum number of nights stay that you have to have. So ways through those apps that they, that the, uh, actual homeowners can, can, you know, make that work for themselves.
Mayor Grooms, I would like to take this opportunity with the Jeopardy music thing to, um, let you know that on the stream, the, um, the, the PowerPoint presentation that Thad gave did not show. Just, I wanted to make sure you knew that. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, it was all, um, read into the record. So, uh, you know, this is our first time using, to, to paint the picture a little bit, this is our first time using this particular platform, uh, in an attempt to garner public input. So certainly after tonight, we did, we did practice and run through, but certainly we didn't, uh, cover every, everything that could possibly happen. So, you know, we'll, we'll take it that Thad did, uh, read all of that into the record. And, um, I'm sure the next time that we are together and have screen sharing and things, we will possibly have, go over that another time.
Brown Drive, um, his comments are, what are the penalties if someone is found renting their property with our registering, without registering? Or if they rent more than the allotted 14 days?
Thank you. Um, thanks, Mr. Frost, for that question. It's, Thad, I think that you have that covered there in the legislation. You want to go ahead and outline what those penalties would be for him?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Amor- Amrose Grooms. Uh, if someone were renting without registering, then they would be subject to the criminal penalty. Uh, obviously, there's no registration at that point for them to revoke. So they could be taken to, to mayor's court and prosecuted for that as a violation of the chapter. Likewise, if someone were renting at a longer duration or to a greater occupancy than that for which they had registered, they would be subject to mayor's court prosecution as well as a vacation or suspension of their ability to register provided that they have registered. And, uh, if, if counsel is ready, I do have a proposed amendment to the duration language, which I will give thanks to, uh, Law Director Radler for the assistance with that. While, while the Jeopardy music was drowning out my thought processes.
Okay, uh, yeah, go ahead, Thad, if you want to read us that revision.
And that would be to section 122.02, to amend Division A. Short-term rental operators are prohibited from renting any room or dwelling to transient guests for more than two weeks total in a calendar year, period. The short-term rental may be rented up to two times per year in increments up to seven days each.
Hey, Ann, I think you need to mute your mic. We can hear you typing.
Oh, sorry.
All right, thank you for that, Thad. Uh, did that resonate with everyone? I, I feel like that is clear. Uh, Thad, procedurally, how would we go about making this with the changes as you just indicated be the version that we are in fact voting on?
So it would be to, uh, a motion to amend Ordinance 7319, uh, as amended for today's meeting. Moving to amend section 122.02, Division A. To read, short-term rental operators are prohibited from renting any room or dwelling to transient guests for more than two weeks total in a calendar year. The short-term rental may be rented up to two times per year in increments up to seven days each. And then if that amendment were adopted, then there would be a motion to, uh, adopt Ordinance 73-19 as amended.
Okay, then I would like to make a motion to amend Ordinance 73-19, section 122.02, Division A, per our quoted legal advice this evening. Can I do that, Thad?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thad, does that pass the test?
Yeah, I, I would, yes, that, that will be fine. The record will reflect what I read and that you are adopting what I read.
Okay, I'm afraid if I repeated it, I would get something wrong and then I would, then we would be in deeper trouble. Okay, um, so I made the motion. Andy seconded it. This is to amend the ordinance, or a motion to amend 73-19. And then we'll vote on the ordinance itself next, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Ann, would you please call the roll on the amendment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Reiner?
Yep.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and now we will vote on the ordinance.
Mr. Peterson?
Excuse, pardon.
Sorry.
Is there a motion to adopt?
We don't need a motion, okay.
Okay, my, my agenda is just to ask for a, a vote on the ordinance.
I see, okay.
No motion is necessary.
Okay, now, Ann, would you please call the roll on the ordinance, 73-19 amended?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Ms. Fox?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Thad. Thank you, Jennifer, for your work on that. It's, I know it's been a, a, a long journey and certainly appreciate you sticking with us. Okay, next we'll have ordinance 27-20.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.204 acre more or less perpetual easement from the Muirfield Association, Inc. Firm Reserve RRRR located on the north side of Glick Road, worth the construction and maintenance of the Glick Road section 3 shared-use path.
Thank you. Appreciate that and for your chuckle at the RRRR. Tonight, our presenter is, uh, Paul Hammersmith, so Paul, please take it away.
Yes, good evening, members of council. Um, there is no new information to report on this particular item. Um, staff does want to express our appreciation to the Muirfield Association for this donation of the easement. And with that, we would recommend adoption this evening.
Okay, uh, so, uh, Sue, do we have any public comment on, that have come live stream this evening?
No public comment or questions.
Thank you, and Ann, have we had any come through the clerk's office?
No, we have not.
Okay, council questions, discussion since last reading? Uh, keep it going. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that if that land becomes available, that we possibly abandon this project in the future and go back to actually keeping that just one continuous strip running east and west. But, you know, just to keep that in the back of our minds that, you know, with the five or seven years we've been trying to do this, that if it ever becomes possible to run that as a continuous bike trail without having to jog across the road, go down another section, jog back to get on the bike trail. I just would like to, uh, suggest that councils in the future, or maybe it's us, who knows, get the opportunity to continue it. And I like to see the jog deleted out of it. And that's just to comment on more or less the design aspects of this. And it's the inconvenience and, uh, also the stubbornness of the people that wouldn't give us the easement to, uh, allow us to, uh, continue.
Okay, well, thanks, John. Yeah, we certainly will want to keep that in mind moving into the future, so thanks for that. Um, okay, Ann, would you please call the roll?
Uh, sure. Mr. Reiner?
Yep.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mayor Amrose Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa? Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
And Ms. Ludo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Paul. Appreciate your work on that. Um, brings us to introductions, first reading ordinances, ordinance 28-20.
It's adopting and enacting a supplement S48 to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Dublin, Ohio.
Thank you, Ms. Ludo, for the introduction. And Jennifer Radler has our staff report this evening, so Jennifer, welcome. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. The ordinance that has been presented adopts a supplement prepared by the city's modifiers, American Legal Publishing. Those, this supplement is typically adopted twice a year to update, uh, legislation on the city's website. The supplement includes local legislation passed by city council through June 30th of 2020 and state legislation current through June 19th, 2020. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 28-20 at the second reading on October 26th. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Um, is there, uh, have we received any public comment, Ann or Sue, via live stream or the clerk's office? No, through live stream, no through clerk's office. Okay, thank you. Uh, council questions, discussion, I think this is something we've all seen a number of times as a more of a clerical item. It's put out annually. Anything before a second reading? Okay, Jennifer, we'll see you back on October the 26th for a second reading on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to ordinance 29-20.
This is adopting the annual operating budget for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021.
I will introduce that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ludo. Our staff report is going to be a combination of Dana McDaniel, Matt Stifler. So please follow us, have it.
Good evening, members of council. Uh, per the city charter, I'm pleased to present to you a proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2021. This proposed budget is general, is based generally on the same revenue projections considered in our five-year capital approval program recently adopted by council. Despite the economic situation at hand, Dublin's economy continues to prove, uh, to be resilient. However, as you know, the hotel motel bed tax and recreation funds are suffering, which causes us some challenges in this proposed budget. We're proposing a relatively status quo budget compared to the current 2020 budget in order to maintain the service levels our residents and businesses expect, continuing our organizational changes and remain competitive to retain and attract workforce. And of course, to continue to move our economy forward. Similar to many past budgets, this budget shows expenditures outpacing revenues. However, we anticipate again that this will not be the result, um, at year end. We will continue to watch the city's revenues and expenditures each and every day as we always do, especially in the current crises, make that plural, and will ensure we, uh, stay within the budget at all times. Most importantly, I believe this budget reflects the support necessary to execute on what I understand to be council's priorities and goals. Of course, we will review this budget in detail with the upcoming council budget work session. And with that, uh, I'm going to hand it over to Matt and he's going to provide a, a brief, uh, and broad overview of, of the. going to provide a brief and broad overview of the 2021 budget.
Good evening. Thank you, members of council. One moment while I attempt to share. Okay, so on my screen, I have the first, first slide up, and I'm now moving to the second slide. Did anybody else see that movement? All right, Cindy, I think I'm going to need you to drive it as well.
Matt, where are you moving it from? Over to the left-hand side there? If you hover on the left-hand side, there is up and down.
Yeah, that is moving it on my screen, but not on anybody's.
Then I'm with you. I'll move them as you tell me to.
All right. Thanks, Cindy.
You're welcome.
All right. So once again, thank you. Good evening, council. This is an overview of the 2021 operating budget. Next slide, please, Cindy. The schedule of events regarding the operating budget remains unchanged from what was previously presented. This year, we will review and discuss the operating budget in a workshop format as compared to the committee structure used the previous two years. And the reason for this change is that due to the impact of COVID-19, the policy decisions that need to be made with regard to the 2021 operating budget exists at a much higher level, at the fund level as opposed to the division level. So we're going to get all of council's opinion on, on the policy decisions to be made in a work session format. This evening, I'll be providing a high-level overview of the administration's proposed operating budget, and at next week's work session, we'll dive deeper into some of the policy decisions that need to be made. We have a work session scheduled on the 19th with an additional work session scheduled prior to the council meeting on the 26th. If we're unable to complete it, those two work sessions, we're tentatively scheduled for a work session on Wednesday, October 28th, and we're tentatively scheduling the second hearing on November 9th at this time. Next slide, please, Cindy. The budget before you tonight incorporates all the needs and asks identified by staff and what we believe to be council's priorities. As Dana mentioned, this is a very status quo budget that intends to continue to provide the same level of services in 2021 as in previous years as we navigate through this pandemic. This slide represents the bottom line on the 2021 operating budget. The budget before you tonight reflects $94 million in operating expenditures, which represents a 1.8% decrease over 2020's approved operating budget. This budget can be broken down into three categories: personnel cost, which decreased 1.2 million or 2.1%, operating expenditures, which increased 868,000 or 2.3%, and capital expenditures, which decreased approximately 1.4 million or 66%. We'll discuss each of these components as part of this presentation. Next slide. Specifically at the general fund, if revenues and expenditures occur according to our current estimates, both in 2020 and in 2021, we would end 2021 with a fund balance of 56.2%. This percentage is 5.3 million in excess of our 50% reserve policy. And as was the case last year, I think it's important to note that the decrease in general fund balance is really significantly impacted by our planned capital expenditures. The 2021 through 2025 CIP transferred 6.15 million to the capital improvement fund for the Shire Rings Road realignment and sewer extensions. And this realignment is part of our economic agreement passed in April 2019 with the Ohio State University. So absent those CIP items, on a purely operating budget basis, we would expect our general fund balance to be about 68%. Next slide, please. Just a quick recap of our operating revenues. Next slide. As was mentioned last week or last meeting, operating revenue is estimated to be 86.6 million. This is a decrease of 6.8% as compared to the 2020 operating budget. Next slide. This slide puts actual and budgeted revenues and expenditures together. So you can see, as has historically been the case, we budget our expenditures high and our revenues low. And everything except for 2009 and 2020, that has been the case. But the Great Recession and the pandemic changed those plans slightly. So as you can see, the dark red line representing actual expenditures continues to trail, be below the budgeted expenditure line, significantly so in 2020 through both expenditure reductions and frankly canceled events and services that have not been needed or been available during this emergency period. The dark green line represents actual revenues, which again, other than 2009 and projected this year, have generally exceeded budgeted revenues. And we are projecting, I think the important part of this graph is that dotted line, which doesn't represent actual, but is currently our projections for 2020. We are projecting about a $5 million positive budget variance for 2020, which is something that I think we can all be very thankful for and something we would not necessarily have predicted when we were meeting in April discussing the operating budget. Next slide, please, Cindy. Will our projection for 2021 shows expenditures exceeding revenue has been the case going back to at least 2008? What you can see from this chart that has actually occurred is that our variance between actual revenue and actual expenditures has been the opposite. Operating revenue has in fact exceeded our operating expenditures. A couple of points on this variance is that despite the financial challenges we face this year, again, I'm projecting that positive variance of around $5 million. That's the checkered green area in the 2020 estimate. For 2021, the operating budget variance is budgeted to be negative 7.4 million. This is a result of revenue declines in the Recreation and Hotel Motel Fund, representing 3.5 million or that blue component of that bar graph. And they're directly attributable to COVID-19. These funds will be discussed in more detail next week at the work session. However, the proposed budget transfer of 3.5 million from the general fund in order to provide the standard level of services in these two funds is proposed in 2021. Absent the impact of COVID-19 on these funds, the budget variance proposed this year would be much more in line with prior budgets, which would be that red part of the bar there. Next slide, Cindy. Operating expenditures, slide 10. So as we previously discussed at the top of this presentation, we're projecting a $94 million budget, which is a 1.8% decrease from the 2020 budget, and we'll look at these in some more detail. Next slide. As a service organization, personnel costs make up the largest component of our expenditures, with salaries totaling $38.3 million in 2020. From a staffing standpoint, this budget contemplates 415 authorized full-time employees and provides funding for 413 of those positions. This is a decrease of one authorized position from the 416 approved in the 2020 operating budget. The components that compromise, compose this decrease, year-over-year decrease, include the 27th pay period. As you recall, last year was the one in every 11 years where a bi-weekly organization has that 27th pay period. So as difficult as that was last year, we're now on the good side of that, and that goes away in 2021. That pay period disappearance represents a savings of $1.2 million. We also allocated a placeholder of $250,000 for the reorganization and salary adjustment pool with that proposed reorganization, and that will go away in 2021 as we complete the reorganization in this budget. There are wage increases per union contract and 2% for non-union employees included in the proposed budget. And again, we complete the reorganization began in the 2020 operating budget. We're adding a new position of the data manager position in a new division, the Division of Performance Analytics. We're eliminating two positions, a custodian and permit technician, custodians in facilities, and the permit technician is in building standards. We're also leaving two positions unfunded and moving them to contractual work. These two positions include the Chief Information Officer and the Government and International Relations Manager. These positions will continue to be evaluated in the future, but for 2021, we're going to move them to contractual. Additionally, we complete the operations department staffing and reorganization. Next slide. Funding for the city's benefits program totaled 16.5 million in 2021, which is a 1.5% decrease from 2020. This budgetary decrease does not mean that the cost of health insurance will be decreasing in actual terms, though. The cost of health insurance is actually going up 5.6% for single coverage to $12,330 and 6.5% for family coverage to $29,203. These increases are driven by a $764,000 or 17% increase in medical benefits and administrative costs, offset by a decrease of almost $400,000 or 21% in stop-loss premiums. Also, in this benefits category, we have the contributions to the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System and the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund, as you can see there. The elimination of the 27th pay period saves us about $185,000 in retirement contributions on those salaries. We're also seeing a decrease of around $440,000 associated with reducing the number of budgeted positions to more closely reflect actual healthcare elections by employees. And this will require a little bit more active management by the Finance Department and perhaps additional action by council as part of this operating budget process and supplemental appropriations next year. But by more closely budgeting the actual elections of employees, we're able to decrease the amount budgeted, and that does give us some savings at this point in the process. Next slide. In addition to those services, there are some other personnel services. Mainly, the largest component of this is travel and training. These were reduced by just shy of $300,000 and just shy of 40% from the 2020 operating budget. The largest component of this decrease is a reduction in travel and training by 50% citywide. This reduction will allow for funding to be available for online and virtual training for city employees, which will continue in 2021. Next slide. Operating expenditures total $38 million. This is a 868,000 or 2.3% increase over the 2020 operating budget. You can see on the right-hand side how the expenditures are broken down by different categories, and we're going to go through them in a little bit more detail. Next slide. Contractual services make up $18.7 million of the operating expenditures, and they increased by just shy of 60,000 or 0.3% from the 2020 operating budget. You can see that in terms of contractual services, there were really only changes in real estate taxes, insurance and bonding, and some utility charges. Next slide. Supplies make up $7.4 million of our operating expenditures, and you can see that they two are relatively unchanged from the 2020 operating budget. There was a citywide reduction in operating supplies of $46,000 and a citywide reduction in equipment maintenance totaling just over $17,000. Offsetting those decreases were an increase in pool chemicals, as we will now have two pools open next summer, and an increase in sign shop supplies. Next slide. Other charges and expenditures increased 830,000 or 7.5% over the 2020 operating budget. This is the largest area of increase in the operating budget, and there are really three things that drove this increase. One is an increase in our refuse and recycling contract, a year-over-year increase of almost $550,000, an increase in economic development initiatives of over $622,000, and the inclusion of the Dublin 2035 framework for $250,000. Offsetting these increases was a decrease in the grants to the Dublin Arts Council, as council's aware. But just for everyone's knowledge, the city appropriates 25% of the actual revenue collected in the hotel motel fund for bed tax and distributes that to the Dublin Arts Council. Because we're projecting a 60% decrease in hotel motel revenue, we correspondingly reduce their appropriation by 60%. So that is a $442,000 reduction. We also had a reduction in special projects of almost $150,000, and that largely had to do with the one-time expenditures associated with the ICMA conference. Next slide. In terms of capital expenditures, we saw a decrease of 1.4 million or 66%. The Rings Road Farm payment of just under 1.3 million was a four-year process. The fourth of four payments was in 2020, so we will no longer have to make that payment. There was some reduction in capital spending in the Recreation Fund, and again, an increase in pool spending associated with capital expenditures for running a second pool. Next slide. To recap, bringing all those together for a third time on this summary slide, details where the operating budget is at, at that $94 million number. Next slide. Again, as I said, it was reiterated at the top of this presentation, the general fund balance policy is met with the proposed budget with a positive fund balance of 56.2%. Next slide. With regards to the reorganization, there are some significant differences between the 2020 and 2021 budget, and we'll go through those staffing changes in a little bit more detail here. Next slide. Again, the two positions that were eliminated are the custodial worker in facilities and the permit technician, and you can see the annual cost associated with those positions. The position added is a data manager in the Performance Analytics Division. That, that, yes.
Those are the fully loaded costs, right, including?
Yeah, they include salary, benefits, and family healthcare for all those positions.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Next slide, please, Cindy. There are a number of positions that are being reclassified in the Operations Division and across the city. Some of these are completing the reorganization that began last year. For instance, the Deputy City Manager Chief Operations Officer, the Deputy City Manager Chief Development and Finance Officer. Both those positions were discussed and approved as part of the compensation plan last year, but the operating budget didn't reflect them. So this catches that up. Had we not had a pandemic, I would have structured the organization to match the the compensation plan sometime in the spring so that this would have mirrored what was approved last year after the budget. You can see that there are several other positions that are created, that have new titles and the reclassified positions, including several new deputy director and director positions. Most of those have a reclassified position of similar stature, and we'll go through those in a little bit more detail at the operating budget workshop. But I wanted to make sure that they were all noted in one place in this presentation. Next slide. We'll do, we'll discuss some noteworthy changes. As Dana and I have said, this is a pretty status quo budget from 2020 to 2021, but there are some things that have a significant budgetary impact between those two years. Next slide, please. Starting from the, the, the largest negative variance to the largest positive variance, you can see there are some things that we've already covered. The 27th pay period, the Rings Room payment, the grants to the Arts Council, the budgeting process change with regard to healthcare, a reduction in travel, the placeholder for the reorganization and special projects were all previously mentioned. The significant increases include the 2055 funds to begin that process, the healthcare increase as well as salary increases for employees, refuse in recycling and EDA incentives. So these are really the, the large changes from a budgetary perspective from the 2020 to the 2021 operating budget. Next slide. And some concluding remarks. The administration believes that this budget succeeds in our five focus areas, particularly with regard to fiscal health. It complies with the city's general fund policy. It acknowledges that the recreation cost recovery policy will not be able to be met under current public health guidelines, and directly addresses those revenue declines by proposing an operating budget transfer in the operating budget. It addresses our economic vitality by increasing funds for economic development incentives by 34.1%. That's a further reflection of the success we had two years ago when we had a record number of economic development agreements. It continues to provide funding for all community events and the outdoor pool, continuing to allow us to engage with our community. It provides for a safe and resilient community by continuing to provide the current service levels for all city services to residents, and it continues our focus on smart, customer-focused government by completing the reorganization efforts started in the previous budget. So with that, final slide, I'm, I'm complete, and I'm available along with Dana for any questions. And I'm going to unshare because it's a little awkward in this format.
Great, thank you, Matt. I know it's a tremendous amount of work to put that together. I, I do want to take a moment and ask Sue and Anne if we'd had any public comment come in either via livestream or through the clerk's office?
No public comment.
And none, no, none here.
Through the clerk's office. Okay, thank you both so much. Thank you both so much. Council questions and discussion? I would like to remind the public that this will have its next public hearing on October, I'm sorry, on November the 9th, and that council will have workshops on this topic on the 19th to 26th and perhaps the 28th. So with that, I want to turn it over to council comments and discussion. You're all going to hold yours until the workshop? Okay. Would like to put a quick reminder out there. If there was something that you would like to see that wasn't represented tonight from a reporting perspective, if you could please let Matt know that so that he has opportunity to prepare that prior to our work session on October the 19th. Okay, introduction, public hearing resolution, Resolution 62-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the Glick Road Shared Use Path Section 3 project.
All right.
Thank you, Christina, and we'll have Paul Hammer Smith back to give us the staff report.
Good evening, members of council. On September 23rd of 2025, bids were received for the Glick Road Shared Use Path Section 3 project. Project will construct a shared use path along the north side of Glick Road from Carnoustie Drive to Dunedin Drive and along the south side of Glick Road from Dunedin Drive to Muirkirk Drive East. The length of the path to be constructed will be approximately 2,060 feet. Included with this project will be a pedestrian crossing warning system to be installed at a new crosswalk across Glick Road just east of Dunedin Drive, similar to the pedestrian crossing warning systems on Glick Road at Caphnes and Carnoustie Drive. Additionally, there will be a 50-foot-long pedestrian bridge constructed over Deer Run. The engineer's estimate for this project is $450,000. Strauser Paving Company Incorporated submitted the lowest and best bid of $385,427.16. Majority of the shared use path will be located within the existing Glick Road right-of-way. The portion of the shared use path located near Deer Run will require the perpetual easement, which you approved this evening from the Muirfield Association. Staff anticipates construction of the path to commence in late October of this year. Glick Road will remain open to traffic during the duration of the construction, and the final completion date is May 14th of next year. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the bids submitted by Strauser Paving Company Incorporated. Our previous experience with Strauser has been favorable on several past projects. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution this evening, accepting the lowest and best bid of Strauser Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $385,427.16. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, Paul, appreciate that. Wanted to check in with Sue and Clerk's Office to see if we've had any public comment come in.
No comments or questions.
No via live stream and nothing in the Clerk's Office?
No, nothing.
Thank you much. Council questions, discussion? This is a continuation of what we just approved a little bit earlier this evening. I'm hearing none. With that, Ann, which please call the roll.
Sure, Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Amaro's Grooms? Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
Great, thanks again, Paul, appreciate your work on that.
You're welcome, I'll see you just in a moment.
Oh, you're up next, working overtime tonight. Resolution 63-20.
Accepting the lowest and best bid for the 2020 guardrail replacement and maintenance program.
All right, do sit.
Thank you, Ms. Aludo and Mr. Hammer Smith, please.
All right. Again, on September 23rd, four bids were received for the 2020 guardrail maintenance or replacement maintenance program. This year, this program involves the replacement of existing steel guardrail with painted galvanized steel guardrail on Dublin Road, the replacement of existing wood guardrail with steel-backed timber guardrail on Memorial Drive just east of Holywood Court, and a removal of a short section of guardrail on Macbeth Drive. The engineer's estimate for this project is $140,000. The budgeted funds for this program are $155,000 in the capital improvements program. Lake Erie Construction Company submitted the lowest and best bid of $152,325. Staff anticipates construction of this program to commence in early spring of next year to allow time for the ordering and delivery of materials. Streets impacted by the guardrail construction will remain open to traffic for the duration of the construction. The completion date for the project is April 30th of next year. Staff has thoroughly reviewed the bids submitted by Lake Erie Construction Company, and once again, our experience with Lake Erie has been favorable on several past projects. Staff recommends council approval of this resolution this evening, accepting as lowest and best the bid of Lake Erie Construction Company in the amount of $152,325. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, Paul. Want to check in with our live stream questions?
No comments or questions.
Thank you, and through the Clerk's Office, none there? Okay, thanks, Ann. Council questions and discussion?
Hey, Paul, I got a question on steel-backed timber guardrail. Currently, that's just a timber guardrail. A steel-backed one, it still gives us the same aesthetic effect. Timber, I assume that's a self-explanatory. But then a steel backing, is that what, is that what we're to expect visually?
Um, yes, and it's actually just the terminology or the description of the guardrail. It's the same guardrail that we started using, the first timber guardrail that we used on Bran Road, you know, over 10 years ago. So if you look at the backside of the horizontal rail, it actually has a steel plate that provides the proper strength to meet FHWA standards for crash ordnance. So it's nothing more than a descriptor.
Okay, cool, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Kind of painted steel, Paul, or will that rust and kind of weather into looking like the wood material?
Uh, the plate itself is actually galvanized. It ends up with stain on it when they stain the wood itself.
Yep. Jane, did that answer your question, or you have an additional one?
No, I have an additional one. I'm just curious, Paul, the timber, the steel-backed timber guardrail is such a better aesthetic. When do we decide when a guardrail is timber-backed, or when is it just metal?
Um, that determination is made during the design process. The difficulty we have with the timber or the steel-backed timber guardrail is the depth of the assembly itself from the back of the post to the front of the rail. So a good example is along Riverside Drive with those replacements. We were not able to get sufficient offset to place the post away from the edge of the roadway to make that work. And a lot of it's just based on the embankment adjacent to the shoulder for the roadway. So our first option is always to look at the timber or the steel-backed timber guardrail. And then another consideration are the terminations or the ends of the rail itself. There's not an attenuator or a collapsible attenuator for the end of the timber the way there is for the steel, so that's another consideration as well.
Okay. Is the timber, is the steel-backed timber guardrail more expensive than the metal one?
It is.
Five percentage, I'm just kind of curious. If we normally, you're saying that the city normally would put in the timber, that would be our first choice, so we will pay the extra money for that. I'm just kind of curious what that is.
Yeah, I'd have to look, but I think it's around $25 to $30 a foot difference.
Okay. And then the one that's going on Dublin Road, out of curiosity, whereabouts is that guardrail being placed?
That is actually just north of Emerald Parkway. Okay. Along, I believe, the east side of the roadway itself.
And there's, and you're, that might be over a ravine or something, that's why you can't get, is that? Oh, no, Emerald Parkway on Dublin Road. There is no Emerald Parkway on Dublin.
Well, no, north of, north of Emerald Parkway on Dublin Road.
Okay. But the reason for that is you can't, you cannot fit it there, is that?
That's correct. Yeah, we tried, but just design-wise, it would not work.
Okay.
Without extending the culvert at that location or, you know, making some adjustments in the embankment.
Okay, well, I think it's great that that's the first choice because I think it's definitely a much better aesthetic. But thank you for the answers to those questions.
Absolutely, anytime, glad to give them to you.
Okay, anything else? Hearing none, Ann, which please call the roll.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keeler? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yep.
Mayor Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa?
Yes.
And Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, under other on our agenda this evening, the Community Service Advisory Commission.
Good evening, members of council. Let me pull up my presentation real quick, we'll get started.
Kirby, I'm going to make a wild assumption that I'm going to be flipping slides for you.
Cindy, that's a great assumption to make. All righty. Good evening, commission member, or I'm sorry. Good evening, members of council. I'm Kirby Durth, an intern in the office of the city manager, and I'm going to provide a brief staff overview of how the stormwater topic has progressed through the Community Services Advisory Commission. And then I will be introducing Chair Steve Dritz for his presentation of the commission's recommendation. Dublin City Council requested CSAC review the city's past and current practices regarding the maintenance of stormwater management basins in residential areas. At the September 10th, 2019 CSAC meeting, staff presented an overview of the city of Dublin's stormwater master plan and an inventory of stormwater management assets throughout the community. The Dublin Geographic Information System identified 305 stormwater basins within the city. Of the 305 residential basins, 154 are located on property owned by the city of Dublin. Staff identified 46 stormwater basins on city of Dublin property that are privately maintained by the homeowners associations within the neighborhood in which the basins serve. CSAC requested further information, which was then presented at the November 12th, 2019 CSAC meeting. In February of 2020, after careful consideration, the commission recommended to Dublin City Council that city assume the maintenance of 46 stormwater basins located on city property with the consideration that there would be a funding mechanism identified to account for the increase in stormwater maintenance. City council conducted substantial discussion around the recommendation brought forward and ultimately chose to refer the topic back to the commission with the goal of identifying a funding mechanism. Staff returned in August of 2020 with several proven funding mechanisms and proven strategies to present to the commission. Staff utilized the Environmental Protection Agency municipal stormwater guidelines to illustrate what best practices are used to fund stormwater programs. Staff also highlighted several examples of municipalities leveraging EPA best practices and an example of an innovative programmatic model. I'd like, I'd now like to take the opportunity to introduce CSAC Chair Steve Dritz to present the commission's recommendation to council. Also, staff will be available for questions following the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me all okay? Okay, good. Yes, my name's Steve Dritz, I'm chair of the CSAC. Our commission members were charged with the task of advising council on creative ways to fund stormwater management for those stormwater basins residing on city-owned property and managed by HOAs. As Kirby mentioned, there's 305 basins within city limits, and those 154 basins are on the city of Dublin property, and those 154, 46 are maintained by various HOAs. It's these 46 basins that are, that are in scope of the commission's funding recommendation. As council requested to see funding solutions that were fair to both the city and our residents, which ideally did not alter original HOA agreements. You have a detailed memo from staff regarding the funding options that were reviewed along with our detailed meeting minutes. I will use my allotted time to highlight our discussion and recommendation. Dublin staff provided our commission with very pertinent information from many sources, looking at, looking at how different communities in central Ohio, Ohio-wide, and like-sized communities across the country funded stormwater management. The sources of this information include the Environmental Protection Agency municipal stormwater management guidelines, the Western Kentucky University Stormwater Utility Survey of 2019, along with several documents which were municipality-specific. Staff did a superb job of summarizing the relevant documentation along with providing the pros and cons of various funding options. I'd like to share some of the key findings from our discussions. For the state of Ohio, general revenue and capital appropriations are the most common way of funding stormwater management projects. This is the approach currently in place for the stormwater basins managed by the city of Dublin. We also talked about a Special Improvement Assessment District, or CIDS, which appropriate the cost to the properties that directly require improvement from the provision of the stormwater management services. So this would basically be the 46 HOAs. However, it does have its drawbacks because a major concern is the CIDS are very expensive for those impacted subdivisions. We also talked about stormwater utility fees covering the stormwater management service for the entire municipality, and we found that these are very prevalent for central Ohio. And you'll see detailed documentation and the information you received. So staff came up with six options along with the pros and cons of each option, which CSAC assessed based on fairness for the entire community. These options are in the literature that's been provided to you beforehand, and I will not summarize them. However, I will talk about our recommendation. After careful review and consideration, the commission recommends city council implement a pilot grant program for the maintenance of storm basins on city-owned property and managed by HOAs. There are several benefits. These include the grant would provide up to a 50% shared cost between the city and the HOA with a maximum allotment established by council. Grants have successfully been used in Dublin in the past. The most recent example is the Commercial Facade Improvement Program. By doing this as a pilot, the grant application process would help us assess the stormwater management needs of the city. And being a pilot, once the pilot is executed, it could be evaluated to determine if we want to renew the pilot or are terminated. I'd like to highlight that the city of Dublin would not be the first to try this approach to fund stormwater management activities. We found that Bowling Green, Kentucky, who's similar in size to the city of Dublin, has successfully used a grant program to fund stormwater management. For a longer-term approach, the commission recommends that the city consider a stormwater management utility as a way to fund the long-term stormwater needs for the city. As the effort and cost to establish the utility is rather extensive, this initiative could be a formal project undertaken by the city. In closing, I'd like to thank council for your time this evening and to staff for the time they dedicated to this important issue. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks, Steve. Really appreciate you hanging with us tonight and appreciate the report. And certainly, whatever comes out of this evening, I hope that you take our thanks back to your committee for their time and their efforts in coming up with some solutions to this significant problem in the community, so.
Will do.
Appreciate you. Okay, I want to take a moment and see if we've had any public comment on these two items.
No public comment.
Thank you, Sue and Ann.
And no public comment here.
Okay, great, appreciate that. Okay, council questions, discussion?
So maybe a question then, under, under this type of an approach, if we were to compare it to the facade program, council, when, I guess this is a question, Steve, to you or the committee, that the council would set aside a certain amount of money? The HOA would bring an application with a cost estimate, have to spend that funds to receive the funds. Is that, is that sort of the approach? Kirby's head is said yes.
Yes, yes, it is.
So I'm going to assume that the, and I'm asking, this is a question, it's probably, I don't know if it's a fair assumption or not, that the longer one waits to do the maintenance, the more costly it is? Is Kirby sort of disappeared? I don't know if that's, or maybe that's a question to Paul. I mean, i- is there a incentive under this program to say, if you bring it forth early, you do maintenance? Overall, we can? decrease maintenance, or is that a false assumption? Oh, I don't know. Maybe to you.
I think generally speaking, that would be true. Um, you know, if it comes to silt removal, vegetation management, those sort of things, they tend to keep getting worse over time. Um, and same would be true of like the outlet control structures that are concrete structures. They just tend to deteriorate over time. I mean, they last a long time, but when they do start to deteriorate, kind of proceeds, you know, quickly, maybe over five years or so.
So is the hope that it with, with a sort of a matching type of an approach, that the maintenance of the, or the maintenance of this would still remain with the HOA? All the management would, with the HOA, but they would come forth with the city for a request?
Uh, that is correct. Yes.
Um, so how, how long would you recommend running the pilot? Because, you know, typically our grant programs are, uh, annual type thing, although I think the beautify your neighborhoods are, we do those twice a year. So is this be something that we would do maybe twice a year? Um, and then would you just do it for one year and evaluate? Or what would your recommendation be for the duration of the pilot? And the frequency, I guess.
I, I would think we'd want to do it for one year as a pilot. Once it got, once it was communicated, you know, to the HOAs that are impacted. But, you know, frankly, we didn't get into on that type of discussion for the duration.
Well, I think this is certainly something we're going to have to look at, you know, we're in budget season right now of, of, uh, you know, where, where we would fall, you know, where we would find this money, obviously, are all of the dollars in our budget are presently accounted for. Um, and then try to get some estimates maybe from Paul of, you know, what would be a significant dollar amount to have, you know, what's it gonna take to, to move the needle on this? If we, if we did proceed with something like this and certainly, and maybe, um, in our budget conversations, we could address this further. Uh, but are there, are there other questions for Steve this evening? Oh, Jane, yeah, sure.
I would like, I, I'd like to know really roughly, you know, how, what's the scope of the expenses of this program? Uh, maybe based on other areas that are, were as big as ours, or maybe Paul could help us out. And that gives us a better handle on the whole budgeting thing or the matching fund thing through the community beautification program or programs similar to that. So, yeah, I'd like to know roughly what this is. And I'm sure it's really based on the aging of these, um, uh, inverts and all these kind of things. And, and the, and the time that, you know, the, uh, right of ways been filled up with, uh, uh, weed growth and stuff, but it'd be sort of interesting just to have an, before we get too far into this, try to understand what, what the real costs are.
Yeah, John, I think that's exactly my point of, of trying to understand if, you know, I, I appreciate CSAC going through the efforts to come up with the, the process, right? Um, but what we don't really have is what that translates into in dollars. Um, so, a- and that certainly would be something that staff would, I, I would imagine something Paul would, and his team would, uh, head up in some form or fashion. Jane, I think you had a question if you, and I think Christina had one as well, so we'll proceed through those.
Question, and, and Steve, I know you identified 46 HOAs that have these stormwater basins. In planning and zoning, we are always talking to developers that have additional stormwater basins. I'm assuming that this pilot in the end, or if we do this, would include even more of those. And then, and so knowing whether or not, and Paul's a question for you, whether or not the need by these HOAs are for paying for regular maintenance, chemicals and the sort that happens every summer, or they're coming to the city because they simply can't keep the health of the pond stable because of silt or vegetation. So as John said, those could be substantial expenses. And then the other question I would have is that, and I don't know if you looked at this, Stephen, it doesn't sound like it in the report, nor were you asked to, but we have stormwater, um, ponds that are on private property as well that just happen to run through. It's stormwater maintenance and, and they also, uh, require, uh, work. And I just wonder, as we talk about this, are we really addressing the true stormwater needs that the city is, is struggling with uh, by just dealing with the present 46 HOAs? Or are there gonna be more? Are there additional areas in the city that need help too? So.
Well, I, I'll start off. The, um, the basins that have been on private property from the very beginning of our work has always been out of the scope, so.
Okay.
I have no idea about their, um, you know, the state of those basins. Perhaps Paul does. I do know the city gives, uh, the, those, um, HOAs or the, it could be a rental or a property management company guidelines on how to manage those basins. But I'd have to defer to Paul for anything in further detail.
Yeah, the, the, really the focus of this effort were the 46 basins that are located on city-owned property yet maintained by the HOA. So it wasn't really to address the private situations, which we really felt, and historically been really pretty well-maintained. Um, we're just getting in the process right now of sending out compliance letters on basins. And, and those go through the private, um, basins as well. But they tend to be able to fund because they are a private entity. So if it's an apartment complex, for instance, or an office building, um, I mean, our investigations have shown and inspections that they are in good shape. In terms of what these funds will be expended for, and Kirby can, you know, add to this too, but it's really meant for those capital costs that are kind of, they haven't planned for or intended. And Kirby, you can fill in the blanks too, if you'd like.
Well, I think that summarizes that pretty well. Um, you know, I, certainly that, those are gonna be budget conversations, but Jane, did you have more questions or you want to go to Christina?
No, I'm fine. I'm good.
Great, thank you. Christina?
Yeah, thanks. I'll be super quick. It's really more of a comment than a question. So I think as we talk through this, whether we do that through, you know, council, um, work session or finance committee or however we want to talk through this further, um, I think we need to carefully lay out, um, criteria for, uh, because it, if, if we have all of them submitting requests for funding, we're not gonna be able to fund all of them. So we just have to figure out what that merit piece is, because I know they mentioned it in here, um, and then just the funding source for it. So it's more of a comment than anything else. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think maybe, why don't we refer this and just give me a thumbs up or thumbs down, folks? Why don't we perhaps refer this to the finance committee? Um, to work with, um, engineering and to put together some budgetary numbers and see, see where it might fit or, or not fit in the budget and, and those kinds of things. If, if that's agreeable, I, I'd like to go ahead and refer it there. If, if there's another idea out there, I'm certainly happy to entertain it.
That makes good sense.
Okay, um, well, Paul, you stick around long enough, you get more homework, huh?
Well, as long as we can make Kirby an honorary engineer, he's really done a great job with this. So I'd like to keep him continuing, continuing to be involved. He really did a lot of good research and a lot of, of homework on this. So it's to his credit that, you know, the, the report and the information provided to CSAC.
Good job, Kirby.
That's great. Uh, teach him the secret handshake and he'll be on your team.
That's right.
And a pocket protector.
Yeah.
And, Steve, thanks, Steve and Kirby for all the work you put into it.
Thank you both. Thank you so much, Steve.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Have a great evening. Best to Bridget.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, um, oh, I guess we need to ma, I will make a motion to accept the recommend, wait, uh, Anne, help me out here. I don't know that we want to accept the recommendation if we're gonna refer it to finance.
Right. I thought you would just refer it to finance committee.
Okay, and then vote on, you want to vote on that? Make a motion to refer to finance committee? Okay, I'll make a motion that we refer CSAC's report to, uh, the finance committee to further study it. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christina or John. Um, Anne, please call roll.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Ms. Aludo.
Yes.
Mayor Amaro Scrums.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yeah.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Uh, fee wa, fee waiver request, City of Dublin, Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center Partnership Exercises Medicine Program. Our staff report will be, uh, Matt Ehrman and Molly Steiner.
Good evening, members of council. I'll go ahead and get this started and, uh, we'll turn it over to the experts for any detailed questions or further discussion. Uh, but for the past, uh, past several months, city staff and representatives from the Ohio State Wexner Medical Center have been discussing some potential partnerships as OSU continues to expand its care network with the new outpatient care facility currently being built here in Dublin. The aim is to collaborate and share ideas with thoughtful discussion on how the city and OSU's entrance into the Dublin region can support or strengthen opportunities in health and wellness for the entire community. First initiative, uh, is to explore OSU's Current Exercises Medicine Program, which is a physician, uh, referral-based program that strives to make, um, physical activity and exercise a standard part of disease prevention and treatment. The program involves one-on-one sessions with trained facilitators, um, and group sessions over an 11-week period. For the city to support this as a pilot program, space inside the recreation center will be needed with the goal being to have participants cover, uh, discover a healthy journey and ultimately become a paying member and consistent user of the facility at the completion of the program. This program is an important community service to patients by improving the health and community uh, of the community and potentially result in new market for additional memberships at the recreation center. The second initiative is to expand virtual wellness programming as part of the existing Fit Biz program, which is specifically designed for corporate wellness. Uh, the, these virtual programs include a variety of topics and include educational content delivered by a certified health coach. Because Fit Biz was originally designed to assist us, assist businesses with onsite wellness programming, by partnering with OSU and their established model of offering virtual programming, we can best meet the needs of our local businesses as more employees are working remotely. To support the Exercises Medicine Program, staff is requesting a fee waiver for the needed space in the recreation center, which amounts to a value of approximately $855. Use of the spaces for, uh, for this purpose is timely since there have been a significant reduction of rented gathering space inside, inside the center due to the pandemic. Throughout this pilot program, staff will assess how many conversions to membership result from the program and will evaluate the success for the program's consideration in the future. Staff is recommending, uh, to move forward with the pilot program and to waive the fee for the use of the classroom space for the 11-week period, which is, if approved, will begin in January 2021. With that, I'd like to introduce Jody Currie from OSU's Director of Ambulatory Services, Steph Marrow from USU's Director of Wellness and Health Coaching, and Department of Recreation Administrator Molly Steiner, all of whom are here to answer any questions you may have.
So maybe a question too, I don't know if it's Molly or Jody or, or whomever. Um, what's different during the COVID experience? That, I'm, I'm gonna use that in a positive way, experience in, in terms of health and fitness. And I think this is a, it's a great idea. Anything, anytime we can do these types of things, I think it's wonderful. I, but I'd be just general, if there was one takeaway from what we're learning, um, during COVID, thank you.
Molly, do you want me to go ahead and take this? Can y'all hear me? Um, I think that the takeaway right now, especially with our Exercises Medicine Program, is the fact that despite all of our fitness facilities being lower, um, and medicine program continues to grow. And I do think really what with COVID, that the healthier you are and the amount of comorbidities that you have, the better off that you do and your chances are better off.
Can I stop you for just a moment, please? Both, okay, Stephanie just muted. Okay, proceed.
Okay. And, and so I think people are really taking notice that, you know, the health benefits of being healthy prior to if you actually do get COVID or, or, you know, staying away from COVID, um, the health benefits are there. And what we've noticed, I mean, we have our own fitness facility in New Albany, and despite our members are slowly coming back, our Exercises, um, Medicine Program has remained full and is actually growing quicker now than it was prior, um, which we weren't honestly would be very afraid to come back. Um, but I think that they're, you know, they're nervous and they want to start to get healthy. And this has really created, um, a platform, a platform for them to do so.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, uh, so essentially this request is, Matt, I believe I heard you, $855 of a fee waiver for the use of the rec center, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Other questions from council? I'm not seeing any. With that, uh, would anyone like to make a motion for this, to approve the fee waiver?
I'd make that motion, and I think this is a great program because for eight hundred and some dollars, uh, and you look at one night stay at a hospital, and with all the COVID evidence pointing to the fact that a lot of the people that do pass away aren't really, uh, they've had other kind of a existing medical pro, uh, problems. I, I just think this is a great program. Anything like this that we can do is well worth backing.
Right, Anne, I have John is making a motion and Jane is seconding it. With that, uh, would you please call a roll?
Uh, sure. Um, Mayor Amaro Scrums.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Keeler.
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRosa.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner. And Ms. Aludo.
Great, thank you all, uh, you OSU folks and, and Matt and Molly for putting that together. And what a great opportunity for our residents. So appreciate your efforts in assembling that program and look forward to doing great things in the community. Uh, with that, it brings us to staff comments and Mr. McDaniel. General?
Thank you. I, I only have one item for this evening, and really this is more so for the record than anything else. Uh, I am in receipt of a letter from Crawford Hoing that was dated September 28th. This letter forwards a response from Department Advisors regarding A Block Bonds, uh, projected debt service accounting for years 2020, 2021, and 2022. I did forward this to council on September 29th, and it's been submitted, um, heretofore for the record this evening. The letter from, uh, Department Advisors is responsive to my request for certain questions to be answered relative to life funding previously requested from council was no longer needed. I'm not gonna review that letter tonight, and I, and I, again, I have submitted it for the record. If you have any further questions you'd like to advance, uh, regarding the letter or further questions, in addition to perhaps what I submitted or asked that they respond to, you can get those to me and I'll forward to them, or if applicable, Matt and I would certainly try to address those as well. And I also mentioned to council previously that I will have some recommendations for you regarding increased communication updates to council by Crawford Hoing and others, and particularly, uh, those also related to the new community authority. So you can look forward to receiving those recommendations here in the not-too-distant future. And with that, uh, that's the only item I have for this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Certainly appreciate that. And, uh, yes, I, I think we all had an opportunity to review that letter in, in our board pack. So appreciate that. Uh, brings us to council committee reports. I'm gonna start with planning and zoning and with Jane.
Okay, we, um, we had an administrative meeting, our last one. Uh, we had four topics, property maintenance, vacant buildings, um, temporary sign codes, and, uh, talking about, um, residential development patterns as well as some of the unique medical facilities that are, are, um, we discussed some of those changes in zoning that might be necessary. But most important, I think, I just want to give you a quick, on the property maintenance and vacant building, um, suggestions, I want to thank staff. They have done a yeoman's job on researching and, um, and finding ways that we can improve our code concerning especially vacant buildings. Um, that our commissions, both ARB and planning and zoning have done a really good job of reviewing that. So just quickly, I want you to know that, especially about vacant buildings, the new ordinance suggestions which will be coming forward, um, which I think our residents will be pleased with, talk about, um, clear definitions of a vacant building. They provide a very descriptive intent on what the ordinance expects when it comes to vacant structures. Um, the ordinance suggestions are creating clear maintenance requirements, which will include all structural elements of a building as well as accessory structures on the premises and the premises themselves. And fourth, the penalties are clearly defined if these requirements and new maintenance expectations aren't met. I think that you'll be pleased with the work that, um, staff especially. and commissions have put into this. On the temporary side code, which is quite lengthy, and I won't go into that. But I think one of the areas that was council's concern was on the non residential sale or leasing signs that we see that are scattered all over the city. The suggestions coming forward will include one sign is going to be permitted per the partial, either ground, wall, or window. And the ground mounted signs will only be will be limited to 16 square feet, four foot high and four foot wide. Of course, these recommendations need to be approved by council. There is also a limitation on the duration. Signs should be permitted for a 30 number of days continuously with no more than 90 days in a calendar year, and they must be removed within 14 days after the sale, rental, or lease has occurred. And then materials and design are also discussed here too. So quickly, I just want you to know that they've done quite a bit of work on this. And I I think as it comes forward to council and you read the entire recommendation staff will bring forward, you'll be really happy about that. As for residential development and patterns and medical facilities, it was just a broad, very open discussion with a lot of questions and thoughts to be worked on with staff. And I have no specifics about that right now because it's still a work in progress. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We'll look forward to that language coming before council as a code update and also for the meeting minutes of those other entities. So thanks, Jane. Appreciate all the work you do on that. I know it's a bunch. Admin Kathy?
Only one quick comment, and that is our first, or I guess I should say next Dublin 2035 meeting will take place on Monday, November the 2nd. And that will be our first sort of high level retreat, if you will, discussion as we kick this off. So stay tuned. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Kathy. Community Development Committee, John?
Thank you now. I just want to thank the city council for pretty much following up with the short term rental legislation tonight from Community Development Committee. I think we're finally getting to the end of it. And I think it's it's solutions very well worked out and solutions that I think all of our citizens are going to really appreciate. So thank you for your assistance in this and thank you for the great effort.
Thanks, John. Yep, certainly good resolution, I think. Finance Committee, Christina?
The only thing that I have is a scheduling change that I wanted to make sure was okay. We originally had the next meeting, we had a meeting scheduled for, sorry, I'm losing my brain here, November 30th. I will actually be out of town that day, and I wanted to make sure that it was okay with the rest of the committee to do December 2nd. So kind of looking to, well, Matt and Andy and Greg to see if the 2nd of December will work. Got a thumbs up, got a thumbs up. Awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And that we're good to go.
Great, thank you. I'm sure that Anne will get that updated on the council calendar. So thanks for all of that. Next up is going to be Public Services, Jane.
Yeah, we had a great discussion presented by JM Rayburn on mobility with Ryan McManus from Share. Just quickly, they have had a, they've had an interesting year with COVID. So they they talked a little bit about their strengths and their challenges. They have decided to rebrand Share and call it the Dublin Connector, which which we all believe is a much better name for it because it encompasses what it really does do. Right now, they're servicing 13 senior facilities, and their strengths over the year, over this past year has been their ability to pivot with the needs of the community because instead of moving people, they're moving items. Their challenges right now are limited CODA service. I know that you'll be getting a full report on this, but one of the things that they are finding also as a challenge is funding due to the changes in budget restrictions with COVID. They are definitely going to be looking at grants and that sort of thing. They have been able to innovate with their apps, with their platforms, with support from council, which they really appreciate. But most importantly, they're collaborating with city and regional partners, and hopefully this will become a connector that will be very successful. They would hope that success looks like 1% of the worker population in Dublin, which is about 70,000. They were, they're hoping for 700 regular riders. That's their success measure. In 2021, you're going to be seeing something called trip bikes, dockless e-bikes, fat tire dockless e-bikes showing up here as a as a project for additional transportation. They have a lot of exciting things going on. I'll let you read the full minutes of that. But I think they have during this very difficult time managed to create flexible uses and met many of the needs of the community. So I'm really looking forward to, and the committee is looking forward to seeing how they evolve here in the next year or so.
Great, thanks, Jane. Okay, next up's CODA, Kathy?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Dana and I and Megan attended. We had our commission meeting this week. You'll see the meeting minutes of those come out in short order. Logan Union Campaign, Andy?
Nothing to report.
Thanks, Andy. 33 corridor, Kathy, Jane?
Yeah, a quick update. We met last Friday. It was great. We have full contingents of our neighboring jurisdictions. I won't go through everything. I just want to make a couple of comments that the development up and down the 33 smart corridor is continuing very robust with development and new activities. And even in this COVID, it has become a real drawing area for researchers. People are involved in transportation, et cetera. So continued very, very positive things. We also spent a fair bit of time talking about the infrastructure and the updates, including the interchange and improvements on 42 in the planning phase. So there's just a whole lot going up and down that quarter. And at some point here, and we get through planning and budget, we'll we'll bring it, we'll ask Dana to help us bring a full update. But great collaboration with our our neighboring jurisdictions. Thanks.
Great, thanks. Dublin Arts Council, John?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Education, Greg?
Nothing to report.
Washington Township, Jane?
The report.
And Bridges Liaison, Jane?
No.
Veterans Committee, John?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, going to go council roundtable, going to go across the screen in the opposite direction this time because I'm mixing it up and keeping it fresh. I'll start on the right, Greg.
Proud and happy. Everybody stays safe and healthy out there.
Thanks, Kathy.
Only one quick comment. The new leaf collection machine that we're piloting came through my neighborhood today, and that thing rocks. So thanks to everybody that that are collecting the leaves. It's small but very, very important work. So thanks very much.
I heard it sucks.
That's what you want in your leaf picker upper, right? You want one that really sucks.
Really well. It's awesome.
I'm great. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Andy.
I'm good. Thanks.
Jane Fox?
I just have to give a great big shout out to the planning department. We, they have been working on so many, so many things that we have thrown in their laps, and they are coming across just gangbusters with the research and the work and all the stuff that's going on with commissions, property maintenance, all mobility, so many things that we hand them, and they're just, they're just coming to the to the forefront with great stuff. So thank you, planning staff, for all that you do.
Thanks. John, you got anything?
Yeah, I'm just suggesting that perhaps, I know this sounds crazy, but we might have to put a speed limit on these scooter drivers crossing our new bridge because they just wove in and out of people at high speed, and it was pretty dangerous. So as much as I back that kind of mobility, I think we're going to have to take a good look at these. These are all young people, but they were just flying through the crowds, and it was really dangerous. So something to think about in the future. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, John. All I have to add is before we're together again, our illustrious clerk, Anne Clark, will have a birthday, so we certainly want to wish her the happiest of days. Look at you guys with your little, what do they call those wave hands or something?
Jazz hands.
Jazz hands. See, you're cooler than I am. Everybody give jazz hands for Anne's birthday. So certainly wish her the happiest of days next week or later this week. And with that all, we will stand adjourned and you all have a wonderful evening.
Thanks, Chris.